Creative industries are too often overlooked. They're driving our economy.
And while Hollywood is a significant source of jobs here in Los Angeles, the creative arts generally contributes handsomely to the employment outlook in the Southland.
Creative industries account for 445,900 jobs in L.A. It's movies, music, art, fashion and design, along with entrepreneurial technology and science.
Nearly 1.5 million people visit the Getty Center and the Getty Villa this past year. But our Getty visitors are part of an audience of millions of others who experience creativity in the visual arts at over 300 museums and galleries throughout Los Angeles.
There is, in architecture, a ton of young people that have grown up here in the last 30 years into world-recognized talents.
And with the Getty Museum as the backdrop, the city of Los Angeles has launched a new initiative. Creative L.A. It starts here to promote L.A.'s status as a world culture capital.
This is a great opportunity for us to advocate and promote what L.A.'s all about, and that's creativity, its imagination, it's the arts, it's the dying, it's technology.
And March is the kickoff month for Creative L.A., with over 100 cultural events throughout the city for Angelenos to enjoy. Reporting from the Getty Museum, I'm Brad Pomerantz for L.A. This Week.
If you want to find out more about those cultural events, sign on to www.culturela.org/events. And in order to make Los Angeles an even more attractive cultural destination, we must first make Los Angeles beautiful. Patrick Rhodey takes a look at how city leaders and residents mobilize so our city can put its best foot forward.
People from all across Los Angeles pack the downtown streets around City Hall for a rally to mark the beginning of the Great American Cleanup, a nationwide campaign sponsored by Keep America Beautiful.
Across America today, 2.3 million people are waking up and picking up a shovel or a garbage bag, a paintbrush, and we're all pitching in together to clean up our neighborhoods and our environment.
And Mayor Villarreal used this rally to kick off Keep Los Angeles Beautiful.
Everybody is coming together because everybody wants to take pride in their Los Angeles and really clean it up. So we're real excited. You know, Mayor Villarreal asked us to dream. This is my dream. Everyone coming together to clean up the city.
We are going to be going out into the city where events are going to be conducted all across the city to clean up litter, to remediate graffiti, to improve through planting of trees and flowers, parks and public spaces throughout the city.
The mayor had some help in getting the crowd excited about cleaning up Los Angeles from a familiar political face.
I know that if we all work together, we will have a cleaner and greener and more beautiful environment. And it takes all of us. We can't just expect government to do it. We just can't expect individuals to do it. We all have to work together.
While Senator Hillary Clinton was the special guest here today, the organizers of the Great American Cleanup want to remind you that protecting our environment is a nonpartisan issue.
Everybody might have their different political opinions, but when it comes to cleaning up, planting trees, painting out graffiti, I don't think it really matters what side of the political spectrum you come on. It's one issue that really everybody cares about a great deal.
This is the first year for Keep Los Angeles Beautiful. And over the next three months, cleanup events will be taking place all over the city. At City Hall, I'm Patrick Rhodey for L.A. This Week.
To find out about those events and to take part, call 213-978-0228 or log on to laocb.org. The city attempts to save its oldest buildings, a new fire station for South Los Angeles, and a major change for a dash bus route. Shaliz Amrodi has these stories and more in City Beat.
Historical buildings in the Adelante East Side project area will be surveyed in hopes to protect some of the city's oldest treasures. The survey funded by the Council Office and the Community Redevelopment Agency will focus on properties in Boyle Heights and El Serino. These neighborhoods contain Victorian apartment buildings, craftsmen bungalows, and some of the city's oldest synagogues. The survey is expected to begin this spring and last 12 months. And that's just the beginning for El Serino. City leaders recently gathered to create a safer, cleaner and greener community. El Serino will be one of the latest areas to have an LAPD Bike Patrol unit. In addition, Huntington Drive is also undergoing redevelopment, including cleanups funded by the district. Officials say the effort will change the community.
They see it's cleaner now. They don't want people here. They see more of the community getting involved, so maybe the drones will go away.
These initiatives will improve pedestrian and motorist safety and enhance the economic revitalization along Huntington Drive. The city breaks ground on a new fire station in the heart of L.A. Fire Station 64 was built back in 1951, but since then, the area has become heavily populated and in need of more emergency services. Officials say the current property is too small for a new station, but funds from Proposition F will provide the community of South Los Angeles with a new fire station on Main Street. The city council approves a dash bus route extension by three miles through Boyle Heights and the east side. For now, the five-and-a-half-mile route ends at Rowan Avenue and Cesar Chavez Avenue, but service will be extended to the intersection of Whittier Boulevard and Herbert Avenue in East Los Angeles. L.A. County agreed to pay for half of the $210,000 cost to extend the dash line. With City Beat, I'm Shaliz Amrodi for L.A. This Week.
The expanded dash line replaces the Metro Line 255 bus route scheduled for cancellation. You've still got some time to do your taxes, and with state and federal tax laws constantly in flux, the city's Community Development Department recently offered a free workshop where some taxpayers learned they may not owe Uncle Sam as much as they thought. Brad Pomerantz explains.
With tax season upon us, the city of Los Angeles's Community Development Department recently joined forces with state and federal agencies to offer tax assistance to Angelenos.
We are here today to let everyone know that the State of California Franchise Tax Board also has credits available to you, the personal exemption credit, dependent care credit, childcare credit. So there's a lot of credits out there that will reduce your taxes.
And we have some very highly qualified individuals, you know, that's spending this Saturday helping you to navigate through the tax law, make sure that you're going to get your fair share of the credit.
And in terms of credits, the IRS was most interested in educating taxpayers about the Earned Income Tax Credit, which applies to certain taxpayers making no more than $40,000 a year. We're focusing on providing services to let families know about the very valuable but underused Earned Income Tax Credit, which can put more money back into the pockets of families.
And we know that somewhere around 20%, 25% of the population that qualify for Earned Income Tax Credit.
And those taxpayers are leaving money on the table. Qualifying taxpayers can receive up to $4,500 from Uncle Sam under the Earned Income Tax Credit, but there's more.
Uncle Sam is giving away money. One time, it's called the Telephone Excise Tax refund. And that can be from $30 to $60, depending on your filing status and your individual situation.
So as you prepare your taxes this year, be sure to consider all possible state and federal tax credits. I'm Brad Pomerantz for L.A. This Week.
If you would like more information about tax credits, you can contact the county at 211 or the IRS at 1-800-829-1040. Paying your taxes may be painful, but tens of thousands of runners endured pain of a different sort when they pounded the pavement for 26 agonizing miles to cross the finish line. Gil Reyes takes us to the 22nd Annual Los Angeles Marathon.
And they're off. 25,000 participants here to prove a point, mainly to themselves, that they can finish despite the tough road ahead, despite the pain.
It's always exciting drama here on Marathon Day.
The 22nd Annual Los Angeles Marathon began in Universal City and ended downtown. For the first time ever, the 26-mile race crossed the city instead of circling. Among the participants, a group of recovering young drug addicts led by L.A. Municipal Court Judge Rudy Diaz.
Well, here we are, do or die, we're gonna get it done.
This is an opportunity for people to overcome challenges, you know, with cancer, with life challenges. They say, you know what? I want to do a marathon.
Overcoming adversity is nothing new to L.A. City View photographer William Kidston. He lost his left eye in an accident years ago, but still manages to shoot beautifully. He even runs the marathon with his wife. Underground, it's also a busy day on the tracks. More than twice the number of usual riders on the red line, runners rode for free. The race wound through the Coenga Pass, Hollywood, Koreatown, and the east side. Kenyon Fred Mogaka won the race in two hours and 17 minutes. His prize is 20 grand, plus a 100-grand bonus for being the first finisher, man or woman. As others crossed the finish line, some were sad.
I'm getting emotional because I was doing so good and...
Others were happy.
I did better than my first one, so under four, so I'm very excited.
This is my 30th marathon, seventh L.A., so it's an addiction.
But all of these competitors could revel in the fact that they didn't quit. For most, simply finishing was the victory. In downtown Los Angeles, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Organizers say the Los Angeles Marathon raised about $1 million for local charities this year. And the marathoners should probably take a load off, but for you couch potatoes, here is the City Guy Andrew Tarr with the list of things to do.
Hi, I'm Andrew Tarr, the City Guy, with this week's list of things to do. Hey, sports fans! If you have kids, your help is desperately needed to save the future of sports. Recent data suggests that literally all professional athletes currently competing in team sports will be retiring from the game within the next 50 years. If we don't do something now, by the middle of the 21st century, there could be no athletes left. Luckily, L.A. Sports Kids has a plan. People who are currently children are expected to become adults in the coming decades. By turning them into athletes now, they'll be able to take over the playing of these crucial games should the need arise. And there's an added benefit. Many scientists believe that by playing sports, kids can somehow become healthier. It's thought to have something to do with exercise. So be part of the solution. If you have kids between the ages of three and seven, contact L.A. Sports Kids. They have classes every weekend until the end of May. And according to children, it's also fun. Go to lasportskids.com to find out more. Saturday, March 17th, don't miss an incredible evening of inspiring folk songs by the one-of-a-kind Joe Jenks. This one-night-only performance takes place at the Center for Folk Music in Encino Park. For tickets and information, visit the California Traditional Music Society's website at ctmsfolkmusic.org. Though he will always be identified with his native England, William Shakespeare's writings are filled with Celtic themes. From now through March 25th, the Celtic Arts Center presents an evening with the Bard's Irish Side in a poetic history of the tales driving such masterpieces as King Lear, Macbeth, A Midsummer Night's Dream, Henry V, Cymbeline, and Romeo and Juliet. The beautiful and haunting music of Aidan McDonnell's Celtic harp will provide the backdrop for this evening of tragic and comic verse. For details, go to celticartscenter.com. And in the art district downtown, L.A.'s troubadours of the visual arts give us artistic renditions of their favorite works of cinema. Emmerick Conrad will be doing the title piece with a performance installation of Grease the Movie, while the music of Grease plays in the background. It's happening at the Santa Fe Lofts. All your favorite movies will be portrayed in these mixed-media works of art, from Star Wars to Brian De Palma's Femme Fatale to the Cider House rules. Go to phantomgalleriesla.com or santafe lofts.com to find out more. I'm Andrew Tarr, the City Guy, and I'll be back next week with even more things to do.
Residents and city leaders honor a late, longtime activist in South L.A. by naming an intersection after her and by pumping in millions to renovate another of her namesakes, the Estelle Van Meter Multipurpose Center. Anna Marcos has the story.
The cloth comes off, and the Estelle Van Meter Square is born. The newly-named intersection at 76th Street and Avalon now honors the area's late, great community advocate, Estelle Van Meter.
I think it give it a little more class.
But today marked a double reason to cheer as Van Meter's friends and family came out to celebrate. Councilmember Jan Perry announced $2 million in funds to help renovate the Estelle Van Meter Multipurpose Center, a senior center Van Meter worked to get built in 1976 to hold free classes and activities for the elderly.
The building does need to be fixed up and everything. And I really do think the money is very much needed.
And the center is very good for us because, you know, now we getting old and we can't go all them places. So we come over here and have fun.
We're still enjoying the fruits of her labor and her desire to bring about positive change. And 30 years later, the center is still a source of community, unity, and activism.
She turned this place into a home away from home for so many of our seniors.
And with the new money, this so-called "home away from home" is about to get a little cozier. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Last year, students from the Southern California Institute of Architecture drew up a work plan for the renovation of the center. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. We'll leave you with more of the L.A. Marathon. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for March 16th, 2007. Want to welcome all of our special guests that are here today for this early morning meeting at 9:30. We are beginning a half hour earlier. We usually meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. And we are televised live on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your city channel through the city's cable system, and rebroadcast each evening as well. We also can be seen online through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where you can watch live streaming web video of our council meetings. And finally, you can call Council Phone, which is an audio service of the city of Los Angeles that allows you to be able to call in and listen to our council meetings and also our committee meetings by calling 213-621-CITY. Want to thank the members of the city council that are here pursuant to council rules. Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Zine. To constitute a quorum, we need 2/3 of our body, or 10 out of 15 members. And we are waiting a few other folks to come in. Like to ask them to join us as soon as they are able to. Councilmember Cardenas, if you'll please join us. Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Wizar, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosenthal is excused today, and that would leave Councilmembers Weiss and Wesson. So again, want to thank you for being here. We have two special celebrations. On Fridays, it is customary for the council to recognize notable days and important people in the city of Los Angeles and in our own employee family here. And we will begin with a presentation from Mr. Tom Labange in just a short moment. So sit tight, and we'll get underway in just about two minutes. Thank you. Want to thank again the council members that are here. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Zine. That's seven members. Like to, again invite Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Wizar, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson to join us as soon as possible. And again, we're going to recognize Tom Labange for our first presentation. I also want to thank our Information Technology Agency and the great work. If council members and the audience will notice that our screens are no longer four split screens up. We have two new plasma televisions to be able to see fully everything on Channel 35. So... And GSD worked very hard on that with CLA. So with that, Mr. Labange? Carmichael Moran from Ireland and a leader in the hospitality business in Southern California. And last but not least, Kelly Leahy, not just the wife of Bill Leahy, that enough will justify her being the Irishwoman of the century. But Kelly Leahy is an outstanding community leader, Irish Fair Ambassador, Rosa Trolley
Mr. President, members, please welcome the Irish community of Los Angeles and Southern Mr. President, members, please welcome the Irish community of Los Angeles and Southern Mr. President, members, please welcome the Irish community of Los Angeles and Southern
Committee, and just a quality, outstanding person all in her own right.
California for the 132nd Civic Ceremonies of St. Patrick's Day here in Los Angeles California for the 132nd Civic Ceremonies of St. Patrick's Day here in Los Angeles California for the 132nd Civic Ceremonies of St. Patrick's Day here in Los Angeles City Hall. City Hall. City Hall. Very good, Terry. And now we're gonna go and we're gonna name the Irishwoman of the year.
And the Irishwoman of the year is a person who has been involved with the Irish in Los Angeles for many, many years. She bought the Irish Importshop about 10 years ago, and she made it into the communication hub of the Irish and Irish-American community in Southern California. Her shop, the Irish Importshop, remember that when you need something Irish, is on Highland Boulevard in Hollywood in Councilman Labange's district. Let's hear it for Ann Colburn.
All right, Ann, good job, Ann. Good job.
Yes, I would thank you very, very much to all of the City Council members who came today to honor the Irish. Many years ago, when the Irish first came to America, they were greeted by a sign that said "Nina," which meant "No Irish Need Apply." When I came here, the Irish community in Los Angeles was huge and vibrant, which it still is today, I'm very happy to say. I would like to thank the Fair Committee very much and the Irish community in general for this honor. Thank you very much.
Well, Megan Dixon, here's your plaque.
Mr. President, members, as we gather here on the 60th of March, a day before the 17th, Mr. President, members, as we gather here on the 60th of March, a day before the 17th, Mr. President, members, as we gather here on the 60th of March, a day before the 17th,
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
we wanted all of Los Angeles to celebrate it as a council here on Friday, which is we wanted all of Los Angeles to celebrate it as a council here on Friday, which is we wanted all of Los Angeles to celebrate it as a council here on Friday, which is our tradition. our tradition. our tradition. Father Abbott is here to give us a few words of encouragement as we open up this ceremony. Father Abbott is here to give us a few words of encouragement as we open up this ceremony. Father Abbott is here to give us a few words of encouragement as we open up this ceremony. Okay, good. Now, we're gonna call upon right now the very special William Mulholland Award winner. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's all take a moment of silence and put ourselves in the presence of God. Let's all take a moment of silence and put ourselves in the presence of God. Let's all take a moment of silence and put ourselves in the presence of God.
As we all know, William Mulholland came from Ireland and was the one who, with the help of many, figured a way to bring water to the pueblo.
Good and gracious God, we ask you to bless all of us gathered here. Good and gracious God, we ask you to bless all of us gathered here. Good and gracious God, we ask you to bless all of us gathered here.
And we've, years ago, we said we're gonna name one after that great city employee who served the water system so well.
Give to those who govern wisdom, those who celebrate joy. Give to those who govern wisdom, those who celebrate joy. Give to those who govern wisdom, those who celebrate joy.
Sean Skihead right here. Sean, get up here. Give him a big hand, the winner of this year.
All of us the desire and the grace to do your will. All of us the desire and the grace to do your will. All of us the desire and the grace to do your will.
And the great thing about Sean, ladies and gentlemen, he's with our Department of Transportation, and he wants to make sure every light is green for all of you.
May the end of this day find us ever closer to you, our Creator, our Father, our friend. May the end of this day find us ever closer to you, our Creator, our Father, our friend. May the end of this day find us ever closer to you, our Creator, our Father, our friend.
Little Irish pun there. But for all the work you do on ADSAC, he's the brains behind the Department of Transportation.
Amen. Amen. Amen.
Give Sean a big hand. Honorary counsel for Ireland, Mr. Finn Marhill, Council General. Honorary counsel for Ireland, Mr. Finn Marhill, Council General. Honorary counsel for Ireland, Mr. Finn Marhill, Council General. Now, escorting the Man of the Year for Ireland this year, I want him to come up here first
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and early Happy St. Mr. President, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and early Happy St. Mr. President, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and early Happy St.
for a little recognition. He hails from that great country of New Zealand, Olympian, five-time Olympian.
Patrick's Day to you all. Patrick's Day to you all. Patrick's Day to you all. And thank you for the opportunity, for sharing with the Los Angeles St. Patrick's Day Committee. And thank you for the opportunity, for sharing with the Los Angeles St. Patrick's Day Committee. And thank you for the opportunity, for sharing with the Los Angeles St. Patrick's Day Committee.
Please welcome Mr. Rod Dixon right now.
This is our 132nd anniversary of the recognition of the Irish in Los Angeles. This is our 132nd anniversary of the recognition of the Irish in Los Angeles. This is our 132nd anniversary of the recognition of the Irish in Los Angeles.
Rod? He's the Sergeant of Arms of our parade today, Rod.
Congratulations to all the honorees. Congratulations to all the honorees. Congratulations to all the honorees.
Thank you so much for that. But the Irishman of the year is selected for his work because he is the General Manager
You do us all very proud. You do us all very proud. You do us all very proud. If I can say in my native Gaelic language, I hope you all have a wonderful, wonderful If I can say in my native Gaelic language, I hope you all have a wonderful, wonderful If I can say my native Gaelic language, I hope you all have a wonderful, wonderful
charged of the home of the U.S.C. Trojans. He's been a wonderful General Manager for the world-famous Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum and has done a great job. Please welcome Patrick T.
St. Patrick's Day. St. Patrick's Day. St. Patrick's Day.
Lynch, our very own General Manager of the Coliseum, Irishman of the year, and marathon
The contributions of the Irish and Irish Americans to the development of this city The contributions of the Irish and Irish Americans to the development of this city The contributions of the Irish and Irish Americans to the development of this city should never be forgotten. should never be forgotten. should never be forgotten.
finisher.
The imprint they have made on the political, engineering, religious, business, education, The imprint they have made on the political, engineering, religious, business, education, The imprint they have made on the political, engineering, religious, business, education, and sporting landscape is huge. and sporting landscape is huge. and sporting landscape is huge. Names such as Reardon, Shaughnessy, Mulholland, Manning, Sweeney, Murphy, Byrne, the list Names such as Reardon, Shaughnessy, Mulholland, Manning, Sweeney, Murphy, Byrne, the list Names such as Reardon, Shaughnessy, Mulholland, Manning, Sweeney, Murphy, Byrne, the list
It's a pleasure to be here for this kind of a day instead of my normal workday in front of you, and that's much appreciated.
goes on, litter the history's pages. goes on, litter the history's pages. goes on, litter the history's pages.
I was telling my mother I was coming down to City Council to get an award, and all the Irish mothers know that I come from a big Irish-American family.
And indeed, we have a new Irishman of the year who's going to litter his pages as well, And indeed, we have a new Irishman of the year who's going to litter his pages as well, And indeed, we have a new Irishman of the year who's going to litter his pages as well,
The mothers keep everybody in place, and so I said I was coming down for an award.
and Councilman Tom Labange. and Councilman Tom Labange. and Councilman Tom Labange.
She said, "Oh, that's nice."
Many others are still making great contributions to the Ireland of today quietly and without Many others are still making great contributions to the Ireland of today quietly and without Many others are still making great contributions to the Ireland of today quietly and without
I just got a big award last week. They had the Leprechaun Convention in my hometown last week, and she was one of the
fuss. fuss. fuss.
honorees.
How many know, for instance, of Clune Industries as an example? How many know, for instance, of Clune Industries as an example? How many know, for instance, of Clune Industries as an example?
And it's the biggest Leprechaun Convention in the world, they say. So, but anyway, she kinda poo-pooed this, but then I said afterwards, "There's a parade,
Started by a man from Wicklow, has hundreds of people employed in L.A. today. Started by a man from Wicklow, has hundreds of people employed in L.A. today. Started by a man from Wicklow, has hundreds of people employed in L.A. today.
and I think I'm gonna be able to walk on it. I might even be able to get in a fire truck and drink some green beer this afternoon."
Or the main, the insurance people, Aon. Or the main, the insurance people, Aon. Or the main, the insurance people, Aon.
Now, she said, "Wow, what did you do to deserve that?"
Aon is the Gaelic for Irish and was started by an Irishman. Aon is the Gaelic for Irish and was started by an Irishman. Aon is the Gaelic for Irish and was started by an Irishman. So the landscape is littered with Irish people. So the landscape is littered with Irish people. So the landscape is littered with Irish people. And let me say that the bonds of friendship between us go very deep. And let me say that the bonds of friendship between us go very deep. And let me say that the bonds of friendship between us go very deep. And maybe it is time, I was looking last night, that there are 25 countries who have And maybe it is time, I was looking last night, that there are 25 countries who have And maybe it is time, I was looking last night, that there are 25 countries who have city relationships with L.A. city relationships with L.A. city relationships with L.A. Mr. Labange, maybe it's time we had one for Ireland. Mr. Labange, maybe it's time we had one for Ireland. Mr. Labange, maybe it's time we had one for Ireland.
I say so too. I say so too. I say so too. Very good. Very good. Very good. Let's hear it for Ireland. Let's hear it for Ireland. Let's hear it for Ireland. All right, here we go. All right, here we go. All right, here we go. We got to see it. We gotta see it. We got to see it. Council General, we thank you, and it's such a wonderful deal, and that is one of Council General, we thank you, and it's such a wonderful deal, and that is one of Council General, we thank you, and it's such a wonderful deal, and that is one of my goals for 2007, is to find an Irish city that we could be city partnership with Los my goals for 2007, is to find an Irish city that we could be city partnership with Los my goals for 2007, is to find an Irish city that we could be city partnership with Los Angeles. 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 Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Now I'd like to introduce and please welcome the Southern California Rose, Megan Dixon, Now I'd like to introduce and please welcome the Southern California Rose, Megan Dixon, Now I'd like to introduce and please welcome the Southern California Rose, Megan Dixon, for her remarks and introduction of the Rosa Trolley. for her remarks and introduction of the Rosa Trolley. for her remarks and introduction of the Rosa Trolley.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Labange, and President Garcetti, and all the council members present
Thank you, Councilwoman Labange, and President Garcetti, and all the council members present
Thank you, Councilwoman Labange, and President Garcetti, and all the council members present
today.
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 Now, I'd also like to thank Mayor V. Regosa for supporting the Irish community.
Now, I'd also like to thank Mayor V. Regosa for supporting the Irish community.
Now, I'd also like to thank Mayor V. Regosa for supporting the Irish community.
And I think it's really fitting today that we're here in the council chambers with our
And I think it's really fitting today that we're here in the council chambers with our
And I think it's really fitting today that we're here in the council chambers with our
brothers of the Persian community.
brothers of the Persian community.
brothers of the Persian community.
It's an honor to be with you here today.
It's an honor to be with you here today.
It's an honor to be with you here today.
I think it just goes to show how diverse our Southern California community and heritage
I think it just goes to show how diverse our Southern California community and heritage
I think it just goes to show how diverse our Southern California community and heritage
is.
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 And I'm so honored that I can welcome you on behalf of the Irish community to all the
And I'm so honored that I can welcome you on behalf of the Irish community to all the
And I'm so honored that I can welcome you on behalf of the Irish community to all the
Irish people for this weekend, and have a very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Irish people for this weekend, and have a very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Irish people for this weekend, and have a very happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you all for your support of our community.
Thank you all for your support of our community.
Thank you all for your support of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce my fellow roses up here today.
And I'd like to introduce my fellow roses up here today.
And I'd like to introduce my fellow roses up here today.
First, we have Caitlin, then Jessica, we've got Kelsey, we've got Monica.
First, we have Caitlin, then Jessica, we've got Kelsey, we've got Monica.
First, we have Caitlin, then Jessica, we've got Kelsey, we've got Monica.
Who's next?
Who's next?
Who's next?
We've got Nicole.
We've got Nicole.
We've got Nicole.
I can't see all of you girls.
I can't see all of you girls.
I can't see all of you girls.
We've got Christine, we've got another Jessica, Aileen, and Brittany on the end.
We've got Christine, we've got another Jessica, Aileen, and Brittany on the end.
We've got Christine, we've got another Jessica, Aileen, and Brittany on the end.
And they're all wonderful roses, and next year, one of these lucky girls will be here
And they're all wonderful roses, and next year, one of these lucky girls will be here
And they're all wonderful roses, and next year, one of these lucky girls will be here
to welcome you all again as we continue our relationship with Los Angeles and the Southern
to welcome you all again as we continue our relationship with Los Angeles and the Southern
to welcome you all again as we continue our relationship with Los Angeles and the Southern
California community.
California community.
California community. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much.
Oh, Megan, that was so sweet of Megan, that way you recognize, you say Happy New Oh, Megan, that was so sweet of Megan, that way you recognize, you say Happy New Oh, Megan, that was so sweet of Megan, that way you recognize, you say Happy New Year's, right, to our friends here. Year's, right, to our friends here. Year's, right, to our friends here.
Happy New Year's.
Happy New Year's.
Happy New Year's.
Give them a great hand for the New Year. Give them a great hand for the New Year. Give them a great hand for the New Year. All right, thank you so much. All right, thank you so much. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Beautiful as it is. Beautiful as it is. Beautiful as it is. Now, as we move forward here, we have a special dance. Now, as we move forward here, we have a special dance. Now, as we move forward here, we have a special dance. Is that correct? Is that correct? Is that correct? Let me introduce one of the great Irishmen, not just of Los Angeles, but all of San Fernando Let me introduce one of the great Irishmen, not just of Los Angeles, but all of San Fernando Let me introduce one of the great Irishmen, not just of Los Angeles, but all of San Fernando Valley. 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 Please welcome Terry Anderson. Please welcome Terry Anderson. Please welcome Terry Anderson.
You want them to dance now? Do you want them to dance now? You want them to dance now?
Yeah.
So, are they ready to dance? So, are they ready to dance? So, are they ready to dance?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Here we go.
Here we go. Here we go.
You gotta hit it up.
You gotta hit it up. You gotta hit it up.
You're gonna dance, guys.
You're gonna dance, guys. You're gonna dance, guys.
The Irish people, it's wonderful to be here and have a great and happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you. Oh, as a matter of fact, I'd also like to thank my guys at City Fire, what was it?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven for picking me up off the freeway when I wrecked my motorcycle about two weeks ago.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Slow down, Robert. Robert Patrick, Grand Marshal. There you go, Robert. Boom, boom. Boom, boom. Two sides, two sides, sir. Here we go, boom, boom.
And while we're posing for that, I know Mr. Zine wants to add his good wishes. Would this be the appropriate time, Mr. Labonge?
Uh, no, not just yet. Well, let's pass it that way. Here we go. Now, thank you very much. We'll get you to a minute.
Shortly he will, Mr. Zine, hold on.
We're gonna walk through this here. Please, again, Mr. Terry Anderson here for our next presentation, Terry.
All righty, we're... Each year, the Los Angeles City Council and the city honor a number of Irish and Irish-Americans who have contributed to the value and the greatness of the great city of Los Angeles. This year, we will start with our Irish honorees. Irish dance teacher Christine Byrne.
All right, Christine, good job, Christine. Good job, Christine. Good job, good job. Okay, good job. Next.
Okay.
We're gonna call you out.
Kathy Leroy Sullivan, who has accomplished herself as a great leader of the ladies' ancient order of Hibernians.
Good job.
Nora Wright Seshi, Arthur of Nora, an ordinary girl from Inchicor in Ireland. Carmel Hill, past president of the Board of Regents of Loyola Marymount University, and also the wife of the Honorary Council of Ireland, Finbar Hill.
Good job. Go Lions.
Go Lions is right.
Where are the plaques? I've got them right here. Oh, we'll get them all right here later.
Okay. Dan Hemmott, a member of the Irish Fair Board of Directors and a city parking recreation employee, an outstanding leader of the Irish community.
Dan, good job. Where are your works, Dan? I work the mark on my friends. Good job. Okay, good. Next.
Take your bow. Charles Chuck James Galdia, Vice President of the California State Board of the Ancient Order of Hibernians. Sheena Roche Delance, Irish Fair Ambassador and Rosedry Committee.
Good job. Congratulations.
Abbott, Father Abbott Eugene Hayes of the Norbertine Fathers of St. Michael's Abbey.
Good job.
Carmichael Moran, from Ireland, and a leader in the hospitality business in Southern California.
Where's your headshot?
And last but not least, Kelly Leahy, not just the wife of Bill Leahy, that enough will justify her being the Irish Woman of the Century, but Kelly Leahy is an outstanding community leader, Irish Fair Ambassador, Rosedry Committee, and just a quality, outstanding person, all in her own right.
Very good, Terry. And now, we're gonna go and we're gonna name the Irish Woman of the Year.
And the Irish Woman of the Year is a person who has been involved with the Irish in Los Angeles for many, many years. She bought the Irish Import Shop about 10 years ago, and she made it into the communication hub of the Irish and Irish-American community in Southern California. Her shop, the Irish Import Shop, remember that when you need something Irish, is on Highland Boulevard in Hollywood in Councilman Labonge's district. Let's hear it for Ann Colburn.
All right, Ann, good job, Ann. Good job. Ann, you wanna say a word to the Irish Woman of the Year?
Yes, I would. Thank you very, very much to all of the City Council members who came today to honor the Irish. Many years ago, when the Irish first came to America, they were greeted by a sign that said "Nina," which meant "No Irish Need Apply." When I came here, the Irish community in Los Angeles was huge and vibrant, which it still is today, I'm very happy to say. I would like to thank the Fair Committee very much and the Irish community in general for this honor. Thank you very much.
And the...
You'll do this already.
Well, Megan Dixon, here's your plaque.
Thank you so much, Miss Dixon.
Now, we're gonna call upon, right now, the very special William Mulholland Award winner. As we all know, William Mulholland came from Ireland and was the one who, with the help of many, figured a way to bring water to the pueblo. And we've, years ago, we said we're gonna name one after that great city employee who served the water system so well. Sean Seahan, right here. Sean, get up here. Give him a big hand, the winner this year. And the great thing about Sean, ladies and gentlemen, he's with our Department of Transportation, and he wants to make sure every light is green for all of you. Little Irish pun there. But for all the work you do on ADSAC, he's the brains behind the Department of Transportation. Give Sean a big hand. Now, escorting the Man of the Year for Ireland this year, I want him to come up here first for a little recognition. He hails from that great country of New Zealand, Olympian, five-time Olympian. Please welcome Mr. Rod Dixon right now. Rod? He's the Sergeant of Arms of our parade today, Rod. Thank you so much for that. But the Irishman of the Year is selected for his work because he is the General Manager charged of the home of the USC Trojans. He's been a wonderful General Manager for the world-famous Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum and has done a great job. Please welcome Patrick T. Lynch, our very own General Manager of the Coliseum, Irishman of the Year, and Marathon finisher.
He's kissing Tom or me, doesn't he? Sure. It's a pleasure to be here for this kind of a day instead of my normal workday in front of you, and that's much appreciated. I was telling my mother I was coming down to City Council to get an award, and all the Irish mothers know they... I come from a big Irish-American family. The mothers keep everybody in place, and so I said I was coming down for an award. She said, "Oh, that's nice." I just got a big award last week. They had the Leprechaun Convention in my hometown last week, and she was one of the honorees. And it's the biggest Leprechaun Convention in the world, they say. So, but anyway, she kinda poo-pooed this, but then I said afterwards, "There's a parade, and I think I'm gonna be able to walk on it. I might even be able to get in a fire truck and drink some green beer this afternoon." Now, she said, "Wow, what did you do to deserve that?" So, that really caught her attention. I'm sure this will too. And thanks, Tom Labonge and the rest of the Irish community, thank you.
You got it. Thank you very much, Patrick. Give him another big hand. Terry.
You know, I'm sorry I neglected one of our most distinguished honorees. He's a Los Angeles police officer. He's with the LA Emeralds. Don Farrell. Don?
On behalf of my father, my grandfather, both law enforcement officers, my Emerald Society brothers, and all of the immigrants of Celtic and non-Celtic descent who have served this country and this community, thank you all.
Now, we were supposed to have a piper pipe us in, and we're supposed to have a piper pipe us out, but I don't see a piper anywhere. Does anyone?
Well, we got some music, but we're okay for the music. But Mr. Ozine?
Yeah, I wanna call on our own little piper, Dennis Ozine.
Nate Holden, former council member who was always greeting the Irish as they attended this event until we have our own Irishman, Tom Labonge, part Irish, part Italian, Labonge. But that was kind of a joke. Leftover jokes from last night at the Big Rose for the Chief. Anyway, I just wanna say to the Irish people, I had an opportunity last year to visit Ireland for two weeks. The most gracious, wonderful people in the world. I have never been to a place in this world where the people are so inviting, so wonderful. And it's not green beer. Guinness is not green, by the way. Guinness needs to ferment, and then you let that little crest rise, and then you have that Guinness. But the Irish people were so embracing, it was absolutely incredible. I also want to invite the people of the city. We're having a parade Saturday in the San Fernando Valley on Sherman Way, so we want also to let people know, the all-American city, Canoga Park on Sherman Way, we're gonna have a festival out there. We have a lot of Irish folks out in the San Fernando Valley, so we're gonna have a parade tomorrow in Canoga Park. But I know we'll be involved in the parade today, led by Tom Labonge here from the City Hall. But to all the Irish people and all the listeners, if you wanna go on a vacation, have a wonderful time, go to Ireland. It's a wonderful country. The grass is so green, the sheep are everywhere, the food is wonderful, and drink a lot of Guinness and have a good time. God bless you all from Ireland. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
The Irish Tourist Board has a place for you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and I do wanna...
I said, "The Irish Tourist Board has a place for you."
Oh, there you go. Thank you. I also wanna add my good wishes. Thank you, Mr. Labonge, for leading this celebration this year. It's kind of an ongoing joke here at City Hall that I can almost claim heritage from anywhere, but it's true. Four generations back, the Baines', great-grandfather Baines', who, you know, the Baines-covered wagon which settled the West was my Irish great-great-grandfather. So proud to be with you today and proud to celebrate and wish you all a very, very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. It's a wonderful day today. I'm proud of my Irish heritage. My mother was proud. She was a hundred percent Irish. Her father was a Los Angeles police officer from 1919 to 1943, my grandfather. And I'm so proud, he was on the Mountaint Unit, Mr. Garcetti. And as you know, on his first early years in 1920, his horse keeled over at Second and Figaro. And there was nobody like Sean and Sean Seahan or Zacky or anybody from the Department of Transportation that had a sign there that spelled "Figaro." And as you all know, the Irish have trouble spelling, there's no question about that. So, my grandfather was afraid of filling out the report wrong, so you know what he did, Mr. President? He drug the horse over to Second and Flower and filled out the report and never had any problem. Anyway, God bless the Irish. God bless all of us. God bless our parents. God bless the Los Angeles community, the new mayor of Beverly Hills, and everybody else who's here. Let's hear that music up loud. Let's march out those doors. Here we go, girls, right here. Here we go, right here. Hey, here we go, right out the door. March it up louder.
And we will be back shortly with our next presentation, about one minute. Thank you again very much, Mr. Labonge. We appreciate the great presentation, and I'd like to recognize for our second presentation, an equally joyous occasion for the city of Los Angeles, like to recognize the council member from the sixth council district to begin our next presentation. Please welcome the honorable Tony Cardenas.
Good morning. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. I'd like to start off by paying my respects to two elected officials for being here. I'd like them to stand and be recognized and wave to the cameras. They're sitting here to my left, Juan John R. Nogues, Mayor of Huntington Park, and Jimmy Delshad, Vice Mayor of Beverly Hills. Since I started off with announcements, I think it's appropriate for us to make this announcement. Michael De La Gianni's gonna speak in a few minutes and say a few words on behalf of his community, but No Ruz literally means "new day," "new beginning." And today, just this morning, and I'm saying, "What are you doing here?" I say that lovingly because he's so committed to his family and his community. His wife just had a baby. They just have a new daughter, Natalie, this morning. Let's give them a hand. For thousands of years, Persians have celebrated the first day of spring, No Ruz, as the coming of hope and promise of health, prosperity, peace for all humankind. I'm proud to say that today and for the fourth year in a row, we, the city of Los Angeles, formally proclaim No Ruz an official city of Los Angeles event, a recognized event. I announced that very proudly, but with a little bit of mixed feelings. Because for a few years now, some members of the Persian community had approached the city of Los Angeles to see if they would give them a recognition, a proclamation, and to participate in the No Ruz celebration here in Los Angeles. And unfortunately, for whatever reasons, they were not recognized. When I joined the council just less than four years ago, I was approached by two of my friends from the Persian community, and they sat in my office very nervously and asked me if we could recognize their No Ruz celebration. And I immediately said, "Why, of course we should. We recognize many communities, we're a very diverse city." And then they looked at me quite surprised, and I said, "What are you surprised about? Can we do more?" And they said, "Well, we've never had a celebration in the city of Los Angeles that could welcome as many Persians that would like to come together. We have celebrations all over Southern California, in Orange County, in the city, in Huntington Park, in every part, but we've never really had a venue where we can all come together and call all of our brothers and sisters from all over Southern California." And I said, "You know, there's a wonderful place in the San Fernando Valley." And they've made that their No Ruz home, their celebration home, and they now have as many as 20,000 to 30,000 brothers and sisters come to that place and celebrate. And we'll announce that, which will be on April 2nd this year, we'll announce that in just a few minutes. I give you a little bit of that background because I give it to you because I think it's important for us to understand that No Ruz, as I mentioned earlier, is a celebration of all people. It's goodwill toward all people. It's peace toward all people. And the Persian community is a very welcomed community by some of us here in Los Angeles. As a matter of fact, there are more people from the Persian community born outside of the United States who now reside in the city of Los Angeles, outside of Iran, outside of that region of the world. Los Angeles is the number-one place where people have come to and reside. Some of those people are standing with me today, and they had to flee their country to come here, to start a new day, to start a new beginning. And as I mentioned earlier, little Natalie is an American citizen, a daughter of immigrants, a daughter of a family who would love to be in their home country, where they've been for thousands of years, yet they come here to the United States, and the United States has welcomed them. But unfortunately, in my opinion, sometimes we Americans don't welcome people as forthrightly as we should. But I'm very proud to say for four years in a row, and I hope for many, many years to come, we recognize the Persian community on their No Ruz celebration, because they are part of our community in a wonderful, contributing way. I'd like for the people who are standing behind me, who are not standing already, if you work for the city of Los Angeles, please stand. And there are many, many, many more, but they're working right now. Many of them are high up in our departments, many, some of them run our departments, they are engineers and are architects, and they hold many positions here and they contribute to this great city. The Persian community is the highest elected, excuse me, the highest educated community to come to this country. That's something to be very proud of. They contribute much to our country. They come here and they give, give, give. And as you can see from the beautiful little girls right in front of us, they are part of our country, yet at the same time, they bring some of that diversity that we cherish here in Los Angeles, the most diverse city in all of our United States of America. And the Persian community, this is their home, Los Angeles. They have come here for a second start. They have come here for a new beginning. So, No Ruz is something that's been celebrated for thousands of years, but No Ruz is celebrated now in the city of Los Angeles with the kind of pride, with that American touch that we, as Americans, should be so proud of, that diversity, to hear music we've never heard before, to see beautiful children in costumes that we don't recognize, to learn more about what they do and why they feel so proud of their heritage. That's why we should celebrate so many communities in Los Angeles, and that's why I'm proud to say that I stand with my Persian friends here today to celebrate their No Ruz in their city, Los Angeles, our city, Los Angeles. At this time, I'd like to also thank the mayor for his support and his standing with us as he came to last year's No Ruz Festival and was just touched and moved by it, and I'm sure he'll come this year. He couldn't be with us this morning, but if he could, he would. So, I'd like to thank Mayor Vierigosa for all of his support as well. At this time, I'd like to ask some of our most distinguished members of the Persian community to come forth. There are many, but today I'll ask four of them to speak. And first, I will ask Andrew Edelman, who's the head of our Department of Building and Safety, to come forth and say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing No Ruz, the Persian New Year. City of Los Angeles is very rich in its cultural diversity and heritage. Earlier, we celebrated the St. Patrick's Day, and similar to St. Patrick's Day for Irish, No Ruz is a very special day for Persians. No Ruz is a celebration of the beginning of the new year, and it marks the first of the calendar for Persians. It is time to cleanse body and soul from the ills of the past and renew emphasis on friendship, family, health, and nature. And of course, like every other Persian event, there is lots and lots of food. And I mean, lots and lots of food. Speaking of food, there is going to be Persian food, Persian lunch, and delicacies served to all comers at the patio on the Spring Street and also in behind the council chambers, and that is for the staff and the council members. Please come and join us. We would love to have you. Coming back to No Ruz, No Ruz is also about peace and freedom. Persians are a very diverse group. They are Jewish, Christians, Bahais, Muslims, Thurastrians, and many other faiths. There's about 700,000 Persians who live right here in Southern California. All Persians take great pride in the fact that the very first, and I mean the very first, human rights declaration was made by Persian King Cyrus the Great 2,500 years ago. As a matter of fact, if you follow the history, Cyrus the Great is the king who released, liberated Jews from slavery from Babylonia and helped build the Second Temple in Jerusalem. So, the history of the Persians and tolerance goes way back for centuries and thousands of years. Today, many Persian community leaders are here to thank city of Los Angeles for giving us the opportunity for success that we have had and to celebrate the No Ruz with you. Today, on behalf of the No Ruz Committee and on behalf of Persian American Communities Inc., you will hear from Mr. David Nahai, who is the president of the DWP Commission in Los Angeles, Mr. Michael De La Gianni, who became father four hours ago, who became a second-time father four hours ago, who, on behalf of the Persian business community, and Mr. Pury Abasi, who is the general manager of the Convention Center. Thank you.
You just heard from our number-one person in the city of Los Angeles who's Persian, yet he runs a Department of Building and Safety, who is very well-recognized throughout the country for the innovativeness that our Building and Safety Department has. Everybody knows the city of Los Angeles is known for earthquakes, but we are one of the safest cities in the country due to his wonderful work. Speaking of countrywide recognition, the next person who's gonna speak is David Nahai, and he is literally embarking, has been embarking on a mission to save us from ourselves when it comes to the environment. David Nahai.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me add my sincere thanks to the council and especially to Councilmember Cardenas for recognizing No Ruz today. I'm very proud to stand here today with my colleagues from the city. They give so much of themselves, but they also exemplify what is the very fast-paced integration that is happening with the Persian community here in Los Angeles. With every day that passes, this community is becoming more and more inseparable from the very soul of this city. Let me cite my own example. I've lived here now 30 years. My children were born here. My parents are buried here. I have no other home. I have no other allegiance. By every measure, the Persian-American community has flourished here in Los Angeles. Whether you think of affluence, influence, freedom, we've prospered here, and we've given something back economically, culturally, and increasingly politically. And with every day that passes, our assimilation becomes more and more entrenched. But if there's one thing in life that's constant, it is change itself. When we first came here, we were Persians or Iranians, then Iranian or Persian Americans, and we're quickly becoming Americans of Persian descent. It's the same story that happens to all other immigrant groups as well. But as we go through our own inexorable immigrant's journey, as have others before us, it is important that we keep something of the identity, the history, the heritage that distinguishes us, so that we can preserve it, so that we can bequeath it to our children. And by recognizing No Ruz as you do, you make that task much easier for us, and in the bargain, you add the shining light of a wonderful holiday to the multicolored kaleidoscope that is this wondrous city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
As you can see, the Persian community, as expressed by Mr. Nahai, they are proud to be Angelenos. They are proud to give everything that they have to our country. Their children are Americans. They have now become American families. Their love of their country is strong, their love of their ancestry is there, but yet at the same time, they're as American as any one of us. With that, I'd like to bring up another Persian, and one of the things that came to mind, David, as you were so eloquently describing your community's appreciation for this country, is what you also bring here is leadership. Leadership. And that's something that's very important. We've just heard from two people who've been giving themselves to this city, one as a volunteer full-time and one as someone who is running one of our biggest departments, but also the private community. Next, I'd like to welcome Michael De La Gianni, the new father of Natalie. Michael, please come forward.
Thank you, everyone. Honorable council members and friends, for the Persian community of Los Angeles, this is a day of joy, pride, and appreciation. We stand here to thank you for the recognition of the single most important icon of our culture and heritage. The Persian community, won't forget your good faith in welcoming us here to recognize this most important day of our culture. We assure you that Persian Americans will continue to strive and give back to all the communities that we have been honored to be part of. We are proud Angelenos and proud to have you all as our leaders. May God bless you and your loved ones with much joy in the coming year. No Ruz Mawarak to everyone.
Next, our next speaker and our newest official, almost official when the council makes it official, but the mayor has announced that the person he'll be putting forth to be our executive director, the head of our, the place where we welcome people from all over the world, from all over the country, is going to be our next speaker. is going to be our next speaker, and that is Puri Abassi. And Puri has been working for the city for many, many years. As a matter of fact, his wife is actually going to be the point person to take on one of the most incredible tasks that any large city could ever do, and that is to make sure that we are Wi-Fi accessible tip-to-tip in this city. So once again, they bring leadership, they bring resources, they are well-educated, they are a part of our community as any other. Our next speaker is Puri Abassi.
Honorable council members and friends, I too join my colleagues in wishing all of you much health, prosperity, forthwith, and peace in the coming year. For four years, you have truly engaged us, embraced us, warmed our hearts, and given us more reason to look at our most sacred icon of our culture and heritage, No Ruz. No Ruz is about nature. No Ruz is also about reflection. It's a reflection on our common bond as humans, the bond that says regardless of our differences, this tiny speck we call Earth is the only home we have in the vastness of the universe, and that we have no choice but for peace, love, and understanding to prevail on Earth. However, we do live in uncertain times where winds of calamity, ignorance, disrespect are not only prevalent in our human interactions, but have become the rule in our dealings with the air we pollute, the land resources we waste, the sea we spoil, the forests we destroy, and the trust of future generations that we break. However, today, the Persian-American community acknowledges that with the coming of spring 2007, in the greatest city of the grandest state of the most tolerant nation in the world, we join all our brothers and sisters in renewing our vows and pledge to do our part in saving and helping our common mother, Mother Earth. Indeed, as well as in words, we will hold high the ideals of No Ruz, and No Ruz 2007 will surely bring forth a seldom-seen energy and enthusiasm for regeneration of nature, for love of humankind, for understanding, and for peace. This is our message of No Ruz. This is your message of No Ruz. And may God bless all of us with solidarity, resolve, and unity as we go on this long journey in the future. Now with the council president's permission, and as this event is being broadcast to an audience worldwide, I would like to say a New Year greeting on behalf of the city council. Thank you.
This is a beautiful Los Angeles day, a beautiful American day. It's one minute we can be, we are celebrating the Irish ancestry and also at this moment, celebrating the Persian ancestry and their culture. So with that, I'd like to give, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, express our gratitude to the Persian-American community for enriching us, for enriching our country and our Los Angeles with all that you give to us. We give you this resolution signed by all of the elected officials, all city council members, Mayor Antonio Veragosa, Laura Chick, and Rocky Delgado. Congratulations. God bless you and may you have a wonderful new beginning, and may we, as a community and a city, be more tolerant every day, more accepting, and more loving toward your community. God bless you. Thank you.
We wanted to add some good wishes from the council as well. And we want to thank you for, for being such a great leader in terms of bringing this in every single year. I know you're more than honorary Persian, you're part Persian. And I, I know that the Irish are going to be there starting their parade, but maybe each year we could rename for the day Pershing Square, Persian Square. We start first with Ms. Perry, who represents Pershing Square, and then Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer.
Pershing Square.
Just an idea.
For today, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Happy New Year to all those in attendance. I had the pleasure last night of joining the Iranian-American Bar Association, the Tom Bradley Room in the Tower of City Hall, and we spoke of diversity and the contributions made to the entire city and community and the participation of the Persian community in the betterment of our city. And in particular, I found very touching the efforts to raise funds for survivors of Katrina. And I just want to note how much the community has embraced and been embraced. The community has evolved and grown, developed, developed leadership even here in our chamber, a man who stood up for me when I needed a vote, Jimmy Delshod on the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and what a pleasure it is to see him standing here today. And I believe if you, if you ever had a doubt that every vote counts, every vote does count. How close was it? Very close, yes. Everybody's vote always counts. Just remember that. Jimmy is living proof of that. And I believe you will be the councilman re-elected, correct? And you'll rotate in as mayor of the first, March 27th, the first Iranian-American mayor of Beverly Hills. And for all those who are listening, and this is a man who stood up for me when I needed a friend, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And to Mr. Abassi, oh, there you are. I look forward to commenting on your already stellar performance in the Convention Center. As you know, as one who represents the area, I try to attend as many events and that you have fostered in the Convention Center. One of the most amazing events was to see you standing there in the middle of a step show. And for those of you who don't know what a step show is, it's a sight to behold. And you were very open and very welcoming to all the young people there and made the Convention Center that home for that day, and your leadership has been extraordinary. Your creativity, I know we've spoken about how the Convention Center is marketing itself more aggressively under your leadership and has dressed some of the rooms in ways that people can't even fathom. And I look forward to working with you, as I'm sure we're all going to be very supportive in attracting new business, business that is yet untried to our world-class Convention Center. So again, to all of you and all the leaders here in the room and in the community, congratulations and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and thank my colleague, Councilman Cardenas, for his leadership and making sure that the whole world knows about the contributions of the Persian community. But I just want to take a moment and talk about one individual, Mr. De La Gianni, if I may. Because each one of you is a leader, each one of you contributes to our city, if not our region. But Mr. De La Gianni, for example, when we talk about development, we talk about what is our role, he continually speaks to the issues of our children, our education. It's not just about the buildings, but it's about how we raise our young people for their future. And now, as a proud father this morning, congratulations. But just the significance in his ability to wrap his hands around these significant issues. The theaters in Los Angeles, the Grand Theaters on Broadway, that's Mr. De La Gianni, his family, making sure they stay open. It's a reflection of our history, but as an immigrant, understands the intricate balance between how we live together as one while respecting and understanding the pride of our identities as distinct cultures from different parts of the world. So each one of you, I want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to celebrate your culture, your food, your music, your song, and giving us that opportunity to understand our own riches as one community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Happy No Ruz. It's such a pleasure to have all of you here, some great friends that we have. And to our new first Persian mayor in the United States, congratulations. It not only shows that in this country, there's plenty of opportunity and that we are moving forward, accessing, inviting everybody to not only share the great opportunities this country provides, but the political support that you're, you're doing, not only shows that, but it also shows that every vote counts, right? It was a very close election. But congratulations to you, congratulations to all of you, and to Michael De La Gianni, congratulations as a new father. And I please send my regards to your father, Azad De La Gianni, someone who had sat, I sat down with often to talk about the history of the Persian community, what that's meant, and really, the, the connections there is with the Latino community. So thank you and congratulations to all of you. It's great to see these beautiful young girls here keeping in touch with our culture, not forgetting their culture. That's so important. Congratulations to you beautiful young girls too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Our next speaker is Mr. Zain.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Beverly Hills, you broke through the glass ceiling in Beverly Hills. The first Persian to do that, correct? And I'm the first Lebanese to assume a position here in the city council. So we're making headway here in America. And our countries have so much in common, beautiful women and beautiful food and wonderful education. Councilmember Garcetti and I had an opportunity to visit Beirut, Lebanon, a sister city that we exchanged, which is a wonderful opportunity. But as we see the culture that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, what we see, the Irish people celebrating St. Patrick's Day, we see the Persian, we see the other ethnic groups, where in the world do you see people coming together in this type of environment with friendship, with the friendship that establishes roots, the diversity? Only in America is this possible. So for you to assume that position and for Mr. De La Gianni to own downtown Los Angeles, that would never happen in other part of the world, only here in America, and we appreciate that. And to all the city workers, Andrew, with your smiling pink tie, you should have worn a green tie today, Andrew Edelman. It's okay, pink tie is okay. But I, but I do want to wish you in the official language, now I hope this is right, Ed, Ada, Hamid, Mubarak. I hope that's right. And the mayor of Huntington Park, will you introduce John? Did he introduce you yet?
Yes, he did.
They did? Okay. I know from California League of Cities, all the wonderful work that we do together there. So it's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate today. I know we started council early today, but this is such an important vital function to show the people of Los Angeles that we are one city united, all the diversity, all the ethnicity. And where can you go to have such wonderful food and such wonderful people other than this region of Southern California? God bless you all and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, and let me add my congratulations for a very happy No Ruz. If you'll indulge me, Harul Zatan No Ruz and Naed Shomam Mubarak. We wanted to thank everybody who's been a part of this. Couple people understood it, but... We especially want to celebrate also that the connections between here, Los Angeles, often given the nickname Tarangelus, and the brothers and sisters that we have that are across the ocean in Iran, that this is a time to renew our wish for peace and also for progress in Iran, that we look for peace between our nations and our peoples. As we know, there are 25 cities, if Tom LeBons was here, he would remind us of the 25 cities that we are sister cities with. One of them is Tehran. Oh, he's right here. So go ahead, remind us.
As our president of council was saying, our sister city for Tehran has been inactive, and we must make it active, and under Mr. Cardenas' leadership, give Mr. Cardenas a big hand for doing this. Forgive me, Mr. Mayors, I was out of the room, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. President members with the Irish. We had to get organized a little as we get ready for the parade. But this is a great American success story. This is what America's all about in celebrating the people and, and, and all of us. And David, your work at the Water and Power, David Nahai, give him another hand. And I could do this here? From time to time in the history of the city, there are great speeches that people make, and they remember them. And one of the great speeches was made in November of 1913 where William Mahalan stood up off of Interstate 5, which wasn't even thought of then, off a country road where the water came from Owens Valley. And Mr. Mahalan's words were, "There it is, take it." And here, fast forward just to this past year, up in Owens Valley, where we diverted water back into the Owens River, an effort that's made by Mayor Veragosa and the Department of Water Power Commissioners. David Nahai made the greatest speech of that year of anyone in Los Angeles. He said, "There it is, take it back." Give David Nahai a big hand for the work at Water and Power. Thank you. Thank you. It just makes me feel good. Last night, we had the, you may have to shut me off here. We had the governing mayor of Berlin here, and we, and he was speaking to the Pacific Council about people in sister cities and people of people. And I recall to the young people that when I was in Berlin, when I was 24 years old, there was a graffiti sign on a church that said in German, "Welcome to stranger." And till this day, one of my premises of working every day is I welcome the stranger, because we are no strangers, we're just people. So we all learn from each other, to the beautiful children, to this great No Ruz. I'm just happy to be here. God bless the Irish, God bless the Iranians, God bless all people of the world. Thank you very much.
We are, we are all brothers and sisters. Earlier, I was noticing the Irish flag is just like Iranian flag, green, white, and a slightly different shade of red, but a slightly different. So it is, we are all brothers and sisters. I want to remind everybody again that there is food for everyone, including the staff, council staff, mayor staff, and city staff in the Spring Street, Spring Street patio. And also, there is a special setup for the council members behind. Again, if I may, I would like to say two or three words in Persian to Doosan Azziz Irani, Eid No Ruz ro behamege tabrik migham. Insha Allah Sal khub be salamat i baasheh. Ve haz har shahri ya har keshwar zindegi mikonim. Az har maseb i ke hastim, insha Allah baham dosto rafiq baashim. Ve ba salamat i o, ba sol baham zindegi konim. Eid shomam mubarak. I understand mayor is coming in a few minutes, so I'm asked to, I'm going to repeat that in English. Dear friends, regardless of what city we are from, regardless of what country we are from, regardless of what our background is, we are brothers and sisters. Happy No Ruz, and may this be a year that we are going to live all in health, peace, and prosperity.
We have some announcements. With that, today is the day that we give the proclamation to the Persian community officially, recognizing them in the city council of Los Angeles, their No Ruz New Beginning Day. But at the same time, we also have a wonderful festival, as I mentioned earlier. This year, it's going to be on April 1st, that's a Sunday. A No Ruz event has been scheduled at Balboa Park in Van Nuys. The event will begin at 9:00 a.m. and will be an all-day event. So we have that event, and this is the fourth year in a row that we will have that event. I must say, the event goes on without incident. We're learning every single year how to make the event better and better, and it's very important for people to understand that this event is put together by the community in cooperation with the city of Los Angeles. Well, all the, the people who are member of the committee that puts together the No Ruz Festival voluntarily, they do this voluntarily, give up tens and tens of hours of their time every year that culminates in this wonderful festival, that now the biggest No Ruz festival in the country, my understanding, yes, the biggest No Ruz festival in the country is now occurring right here in Los Angeles. Again, it's on April 1st, that's this Sunday, two Sundays from now, at the Balboa Park in Van Nuys. Will all the members of the committee please stand? Please stand if you're members of the committee and you contribute to this event. Oh, they're all standing behind me. It's my understanding that the mayor is going to address the council in just a few seconds.
The mayor is. If I could ask everybody, why don't we do this? If you can just sit tight, he's expected any minute.
Oh, there he is.
Mayor of the city of Los Angeles.
I have one more announcement. I was handed a note. The mayor will be here in 15, oh, nope, here he is. The mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Veragosa.
I want to thank all of you for extending this for enough time so that I could be here. I want to acknowledge Tom Labange for his help there, and of course, Councilmember Tony Cardenas. Tony Cardis. I was reading that although we have the largest population of Iranians outside of Iran, here in Los Angeles, we've only been celebrating Noruz for three years. And the individual who, four years, the individual who brought this issue to the tables, the man standing next to me. And as you know, Noruz marks the first day of the spring season, and I'm very excited that we may have the first Iranian mayor of a city in the United States of America. And I'm very proud that I supported my friend Jimmy Dalshad. And so, this year, as you know, it's celebrated on March 20th, and I'm very excited about that. I say, as we all do here in Los Angeles, that we're so proud of the diversity of this town. So proud that in our chambers, it seems every other week, we're celebrating the contribution, the rich culture, the language of the many communities that make Los Angeles. And this community, a community, many of whom came here fleeing persecution, who came here to make a better life. And they've made a life, and they made a contribution to the city and this nation that they should be so proud of. And all of us are enriched by those contributions. And so, I want to acknowledge this community, and I also want to say that we have a new general manager among us, my new appointee to the convention center. And we want to acknowledge you for you. And so, with wishing everyone a happy Persian New Year, Ada Shomah Mubarak. A great author, Mark Twain, once said that the universal brotherhood of man, could easily have said sisterhood of woman, of course, is our most precious resource. And the brotherhood and the sisterhood that we have with this community is very deep and profound, and I'm very honored to be here. Thank you so much.
With that, in the spirit of the proclamations, the mayor's... You ready?
Yes.
The mayor will also give proclamation to the Persian community on behalf of the mayor himself. And then after that, no more words, what we will do after this presentation, we will start our own parade in the spirit of the Irish parade that kind of happened a few minutes ago, and we're going to go this way. Okay, Mayor?
Thank you. And so, along with council member Cardis and all of the members of the council, I'd like to... Boy, this looks like it came from Iran, huh? This is a beautiful frame. I want one of these. I want to wish you congratulations on Noruz, celebration of the Persian New Year. As mayor of this city, I am very, very proud that this is the city with the largest population of Iranians and Persians anywhere outside of Iran. We want more of you. And so, on this first day of spring in the city of Los Angeles, congratulations. I'll give that to you.
Happy Noruz, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Cardis, Skrohan, Weezer, Le Bonj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zahn, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a core, Mr. President.
Okay. Let's run through the first order of business, excuse me.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Weiss seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Le Bonj moves, and Ms. Han seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be approved.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items, notice for public hearings, items 1 through 7, the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to April 4th.
Okay. If there's no objection to that, we will open the public hearings and continue those ordinances until April 4th. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 8 through 25.
Okay. Colleagues, we're 8 through 25. Any special items, 8 through 25? 8 through 25, go on once, go on twice. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items 26 through 59. Those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and on item number 44, an amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Hold on one second. If I could just respectfully ask folks if we can try to take the conversations and celebrations outside into the rotunda. We're going to continue with the council's business right now. Okay. So, that's already been circulated on 44?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 44, the amending motion has been circulated.
All right. We'll substitute that. Ms. Perry?
I want to call item 44 special.
24?
44.
44 special for Ms. Perry. 48 special, and there are cards from that one as well. Mr. Parks?
55.
45?
55.
55, thank you, from Mr. Parks. Any other specials, colleagues? We also have cards on 26, 37, 45, 50, 51, and 58. Those will be called special for cards from the public. On the remainder, we will open and close the public hearing. And if there are no other specials from the council, we can take up the balance, please. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there is a special meeting that has been adjourned. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, please. Let's recess the regular meeting, and please call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardis, Skrohan, Weezer, Le Bonj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zahn, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a core, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Mr. President, this is item 60, and it's an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. There's no objection to the consideration. That will be before us. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved.
And that concludes the special meeting.
Okay. Let's come back to the regular meeting now.
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time, or go through the items called special?
We'll go to public comment first. Like to invite our first public speaker, two minutes per speaker. Jeffrey David Morris will be our first speaker, and then Zumadog will be second.
Yes, thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak.
Welcome. Hold on one second. I just want to make sure the people, we get a little quieter so we can hear you.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask folks to please very respectfully take their conversations outside so we can continue the meeting. If you can wait till you are in the rotunda to continue speaking. Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak. I'll be as brief as I can. Jeffrey Morris, tenant and voluntary building property tenant advocate of 719 North Heliatrobe Drive, which is a rent-controlled building and is Section 8 contracted and a part of the Shelter Plus Care Program. And I am a voluntary community neighborhood advocate of North Heliatrobe Drive and Melrose Avenue, zip code 90029, and working with Neighborhood LAPD Senior Lead Officer Matt Ziegler. Couple points, and I'll be brief as I can. As voluntary tenant advocate, I'm here speaking for 22-plus tenants, including their children and myself. Slum landlord, Sharam John Samba, is continuing lead to flout the law and consistently not following through with the needed repairs and slum condition changes unto the rent-controlled apartment building and property in question. A repeat continual cycle of the two previous owners two years ago who were prosecuted by city attorney Rocky, for which I have the 9904 press statement to back that up. The building's tap water is contaminated due to long undealt with eroded water pipes throughout the building, which has led to at least one tenant in getting sick and throwing up on at least three different occasions. The tap water needs to be seriously tested by the EPA to prevent further sickness of tenants. I've communicated with LA HUD, LA HD, LADBS, and Hackla, all whom have warned the owner continuously to correct or face serious legal action. Or on other occasions, no conclusive results have been produced or resulted.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, we have the clock for two minutes just to make sure we keep it even for everybody, but we appreciate that. If there's anything you'd like to give to the guards, we'd be happy to take that. Our next speaker is Zumadog.
Wow, I just met Mayor Antonio Villarosa. Thank you so much, Mayor Tony. We had some shrimp because it's Persian Day, and I had some shrimp for the mayor. He thanked me so much for my blogging efforts. But right now, what I'd like to do is talk about, you know that I've been talking about Dr. W. Edwards Deming. I think City Hall could benefit from his methods for management of quality and productivity, the magazine Quality Digest from 1994, why it is important to institute Dr. Deming's methods of management, quality, and productivity. The mayor wants Los Angeles to be a global destination, international for tourism and for business. And if we're going to be in a global economy, the rest of the world has already taken Dr. Deming's 14 methods of quality and productivity and put them to work in manufacturing. The Japanese took these principles back in the 50s and late 40s and put them to use, and now we're importing their manufacturing products. So, we've lost the manufacturing industry. Now, we want to accommodate tourism and business to help serve the global economy who's kicking our butts right now. So, this is a blueprint on how to institute quality and productivity, break down barriers between departments, become more efficient. Now, you can say, well, gee, what do we need to institute methods of management and quality and productivity? Because the rest of the world has. And when you're trying to get Japan business, Asia, India, from across the country, they step off the plane, and the first thing they do is they go, there's no Dr. Deming. And you go, well, who cares? Dr. Deming's like George Washington to the rest of the world. So, they're having to deal with our inefficiencies, us tripping all over ourselves, our lack of quality and productivity. It's making their life difficult. So, it's kind of like saying, yes, we don't work out, we eat unhealthy, we drink, we don't care, we don't take care of ourselves, but we'd like to, you know, have your fitness business, you know, your nutrition business. It doesn't work. So, if you go to the mayor, first of all, I have a copy of the article I wrote right here. It's a world-class article. Dr. Deming approved it himself. I'm going to give it to the fiscalist responsible SCAG person, Bernard Parks.
Thank you very much. We'll take that from you. Thank you, Mr. Dog. Appreciate it. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our new, is our next speaker. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone. Before we get started today, I would like to say congratulations and St. Patrick's Day to all Irish. As we begin this meeting, because of electricity fires, shortage of electricity, power under houses, inside walls and ceilings, many electricity bills have not been paid by residents living in Los Angeles and in each county. Mr. Kobe Bryant's down of paying for over 30% of the bills for over millions of people that are visiting Los Angeles and not basically staying here, has caused our budget to stay in billions of dollars in debt. We must have over 80% of residents in Los Angeles and not visiting in Los Angeles, California. All bills must be paid in full of any job or any sports position job. Again, we must be very cautious, residents and houses and buildings. Electricity is already on. No one is paying a bill. Therefore, we must get that in order. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. Just have two items, very quickly. On today's agenda, item number 25 regards to committee reports, or two committees submitting reports for an agreement with Southland Car Counters. Could you clarify this to say that this is one agreement with three different companies? The way it reads right now is one agreement with almost, it looks like it's one company, that it's one agreement with three different companies?
Mr. President, this is item on the agenda, and it's already had a public hearing in committee.
Yes, I understand that, sir. But this is public comment, and I'm commenting on something that's not, that I wasn't available for the public hearing. And also, in addition to that, I would like to wish everybody a healthy and happy holiday, and please don't drink and drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Victor de la Torre is our next speaker, and then William Rodriguez Morrison.
Morning. Eric, is it okay if I go ahead, um, so this way I can...
Sure, go ahead first, and then Mr. De la Torre.
Thank you, future colleagues. Actually, of course, you haven't seen me here in a while. Actually, I presented some paperwork to you a couple weeks back on gun control, which I you should have there. And one of the main motions is we're trying to get guns off the street on a motion, on a proposal. So, I'm hoping council chambers can do a quick motion on that possibly today to get this thing pressed forward. I know I left somewhat to your office, Mr. Weston over there. Okay, so anyways, his proposal, this Mr. De la Torre, the gentleman I mentioned before when I came to your office, and he's going to go through that motion for you. So, hopefully, we can push forward on this and try to get it through to the mayor's office today. Thank you.
My name is Victor de la Torre, and thanks for hearing me here today. And I came up with a solution to get guns off the street. Me being a former gang member back in the 70s, I came up with a victim memorial deployment. I have here a .38 revolver handcuffed to a set of bars, and I've come up with what's going to be put here is turn in that Saturday Night Special for someone special. The more guns we get off the streets, the more crime we defeat. Just remember the loved ones by the guns that we surrendered. The more... Why I said that, or excuse me. Bear with me, I'm nervous. Help save our sons, turn in those guns. I'm getting very good, positive feedback on this plan of mine. I just need your support. I got a letter from the mayor too, supporting this. I just don't know where to go from here. If I don't get, if I get turned down, I don't know what I'm going to do, because I'm setting goals for my life, and I want to reach them goals. I want to do everything in my power to reach those. I don't know where else to go, like I said, so please have an open mind about this. I've got support from a lot of people on this. That's about it. There's more to say, but I'm just nervous. I'm blank now.
You're doing well. Don't worry.
And one other thing is, we want to make that motion to go towards like the LA River Project to put the wall up, if that can be possibly done.
For every gun that's turned in, like the program they have with, you turn the gun, no questions asked, and it would get a computer back in the day. Well, that didn't work too good, but the same thing applies here. Any gun turned in, no questions asked, the names of anybody is that due to gun violence to be placed on the memorial plaque in front of every city hall where that person had lived, or like in the LA City Project. And I'm sure the other major cities across the country will follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. De la Torre. Appreciate your presence here. Leonard Wayne Rose is next.
My name is Leonard Wayne Moore Jr. I live at City Lotte Pointe. I'm here to talk about, I went to early board supervisor last month ago, and I made a speech about the community center, make our community center for kids, you know, and make a bigger program for our youth, and that they get As and Bs and Cs, so that Ds and Fs, and community center is like basketball, swimming, and football, soccer, you know, and a different program. And I got another program, teenchallenges.com. They help gang members, you know, in the Wall Street area, you're going to have teen challenges, they're going to plant a church down there, and they're going to help... a teen challenge, they're going to plan to turn down there, and they're going to help witnessing our community for the Lord Jesus Christ, you know, let them know Jesus as Lord Purisaver. And I know LA Dream Center, and Cali Chapel, and Big Brother, you know, they got numbers of churches, and, and other churches is joining together to bring crime down and help them find, find them men home, women home for the community. And we want a city get involved, and their website is www.teenchallenge.com. Their address at Riverside, and the number is 915-682-8990. And Riverside Challenge is a headquarters, and if you want to get involved, know about the program, and they have for the community, and it's helping keep the crime, crime down, and, and I wish churches and states to get together, and I wish you help a lot of people in the city of LA, and, and I thank you for your time, and here are all the papers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure Sergeant Arment takes that. Thank you, Mr. Rose. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley next. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker, and then Miriam Fogler.
Again, a little more warning would be helpful, and then I'd be at the desk. Sharon Brewer, Persian New Year event at Lake Balboa, 15 days until the event. As of Wednesday, March 14, 2007, information from Recreation and Parks says that Woodley 1 and 2 not being used, Woodley Avenue not closed. I've asked what parts of Lake Balboa will be involved. I've asked, will any parts of Lake Balboa be closed to the public, general public? If yes, why? The response from Rec and Parks is, once the permit is complete, then the plot plan ought to answer that question. Today, I heard that the event will start at 9:00 AM and go all day. I have also heard that the community, along with the city, have been involved with planning, the planning of this event. I've been coming in front of you, telling you, I don't know anything about the event, I can't get any information from Recreation and Parks about the event, I'm part of the community where the event is being held, and I can't get any information about the event. And this is not an event that the community is aware of unless you speak Farsi, they, it's basically the English-speaking community or non-Farsi-speaking community are being discriminated against because they're not being told about the event. I still don't know if the guy is going to charge, and seeing that they go and say that there's 20,000 to 30,000 people, last year at $5 a head, that's a lot of money that went straight to the vendor and not to the, the city. And I really am upset that information is not being given to the community regarding a major event. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler, and then Candido Morris back here.
Good morning. I'm sorry, but I have to talk about what you just said, the members of the city council, including President Eric Garcetti, that nobody's allowed to have food or water in the chambers, and that goes for the city council, the whole city council chamber, too, the whole city council, people, people who are the council people who are sitting in their seats next to, they call them trash canisters, no excuse. You got to have the rule, all for everybody, or none at all, because you can't enforce a law and have some people getting it enforced and others not. So you have to apply it to either all or none, and there is no rule right now on it. And besides, I was, I applied for the police department 25 years ago, and this is a shameful thing that, that many, that the member, I cannot say, because of course, you're saying I had to talk to all, but I'm going to tell you, I have a right to, because I elect a city council person, CD6, and I have a right to speak to my council person and make my grievance. So I'm making some corrections to you, the president, who is controlling the, the speaker here, and to let you know that anybody can speak in public comment, anything that retains to the city business at hand, including the handgun control, is not going to stop violence. Matter of fact, it's going to make it worse, much worse. So the more people that have guns, the better we are to, to stop the violence by doing, by having a choice and stopping people from doing violence. It's the right to people to defend themselves and to show to these people that they cannot go out and murder people. And we have a right to defend ourselves, we have a right to kill, not murder. We have the right to defend ourselves, which is the right to kill if somebody comes and wants to slay you. It says in the Bible. I don't want to get into that, but I believe that, I believe everybody here, I want everybody here, because I'm, you know, we're fighting for the keeping civilization going. Bless your heart.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Our next speaker is Candido Morris, and then Larry Gross.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. We welcome back. I hope you had a productive week. Again, it's, must be an honor to lead the greatest city in the greatest country in the world, where today we celebrate Americans of Irish descent, Americans of Persian descent, and I have the honor of being a sponsor of an individual who lives in Tehran right now, and hopefully, he'll be here in two, two months. So again, it's a privilege. What I, I do want to talk about is what happened about a week and a half, excuse me, about almost 10 days ago, when you folks discussed the consolidated plan. Many times, people come here to criticize you, but what happened that day is, we had a great discussion about the consolidated plan, and Mr. Garcetti, you said it clearly, that the consolidated plan is one of the biggest budgets that this council deals with. And Mr. Reyes, when you talked about the lost income, the lost dollars that has taken place in the last six years, and that we have to go out and tell the government, tell the mayor, excuse me, the president, we need those dollars, we need those dollars back in our cities. And Mr. Parks, when he talked about the effectiveness, are these dollars really doing great things in our community to rid us of poverty and to make an impact on the gangs? I just needed the public to know that you folks are really doing a good job with the consolidated plan. And when you have a leader like Mr. Wes, Weston on that, I know you're the feral of the committee, but again, everybody can talk about your leadership and what a great job you're doing, but when we, the public, and those of us who are part of the committee, are part of that process, and we see the leadership, we, we need to speak up and say thank you for your leadership, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And our last speaker for general public comment is Larry Gross.
Good morning, folks. My name is Melrose Larry Green, and I actually came down here at the last moment.
Larry Gross is the deputy mayor. Excuse me, I had a little brain explosion there. Mr. Green, welcome. Nice to see you.
I should have been the mayor, not the deputy mayor. But Larry Gross, Larry Green, whatever. Anyway, I was not supposed to be down here this morning, but I, I picked up the LA Times this morning, heard there's a parade. So I'm, I, I looked at the route, and I said, 11:30, I can, I can fit it into my schedule, so I took the subway here, and I just came to speak in public comment for a very brief moment about Deco, Candido's comments, what a great job the city council is doing. And I live at the border of the 4th and the 13th, basically within the 4th, but I'm just a few moments away from your district, Eric. And what's going on in Hollywood is phenomenal. What's going on in Boyle Heights and downtown Los Angeles and South LA is phenomenal. Unfortunately, the LA Times and the, the TV stations don't always cover the good things going on. That's an understatement. But we know, the people know, and there's a reason why a lot of you ran unopposed, it's because you're doing a great job, and nobody can beat you most, and those that ran against you campaigned hard, but God knows, I've, I've come up short several times in politics, and, and we've got a great team down here. We've got a great team, and you're as powerful as the United States Congress, as the president, as the governor. And I don't sell the LA City Council short. I know we don't always agree on things eye to eye. Hope you had a good national, national council cities meetings. There's a lot of people good running for office in November of '08, and this body can make a lot of policy. Anyway, that's all, I came here to say that and give you a little pep talk and welcome back. My cat's doing fine, Herb. My cats have a great life. They pay no rent, they have no bills, no mortgages, no bonded indebtedness, they just give you unconditional love. Everybody adopt a cat or a dog. I'm done. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. That closes our general public comment. First item, please.
First item, Mr. President, is item number 26, and that was called special for card from the public.
Okay, item number 26. You have a card, Arnold Sachs. Forward, Mr. Sachs.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. I have grave concerns, basically based on previous meetings here held in the council chambers. A regarding the CAO's office, and the actions that have taken place in the last few weeks. In the end of February, the CA's, A, CAO's office was, was called on the carpet for a contract regarding bonds to be sold for the police department, that the CAO.
Excuse me, Mr. President, this has to do with a DWP matter?
Sir, please hold my time, Mr. President. At the end of the article, it says, CAO is issuing a financial impact statement, and my concerns regarding the CAO's office issuing financial impact statement regard, are because they were held on the carpet for selling, claiming that bonds that would be sold would cost the city $23 million, yet it was found by Councilman Cardenas that, in fact, that the sale of the bonds would actually save the city $75,000. So where there's a difference of $23,075,000. And then last week, the CAO's office was issued a proclamation for the good work they've done. I'm concerned because the same CAO's office, A, is held on the carpet one week, and B, given an award the second week. And regarding the DWP, because of the past bad publicity they've received, I'm also have grave concerns regarding that, and I'd like to know if there's any kind of watchdog committees overlooking to see that there's no misappropriation of funds, timing, or anything along those regards. Because as we've heard in the papers and regarding the DWP contract, when you work for the DWP, you get paid overtime.
Mr. President, the speaker was never on topic on that item.
Thank you. We'll, we'll close general comment there. Thank you, sir. Our, that closes comment for this item. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 37, call special for card from the public.
All right, Zuma Dog on item 37.
Pass on that one.
Okay. That closes general comment on that. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 44 was called special by Councilmember Perry, but I understand her questions have been answered and.
Okay.
Yeah, I just needed to move that item forth with, Mr. President. Thank you.
If it passes, we will cross that bridge. Let's open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And successfully having passed, if there's no objection, we'll send that forth with also 22.
And that was as amended.
Yes, as amended. And 22 forthwith, too, if there's no objection. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 45, and that was call special for card from the public.
Okay, Mr. Dog, item 45.
Y'all commented on this because it's special events, but it's about Harbor Gateway, so I'd like to say, at that event, I think the most important thing for the situation at Harbor Gateway is community, is the community of the families themselves, the people watching. If you could please get involved with your kids and, you know, try to instill some more responsibility, level of standards. You can judge a lot by the parents, you know, I've, I've lived, I, I've worked with a lot of kids age, let's say, 8 to 15, and you could really judge the type of job the parents are doing by the kids. Some are allowed to swear, some will get their butts kicked if they swear, some get into fights, some say, I got to get out of here, my mom will kill me if she sees me in a fight. And so we need to take back the streets and to the gangsters out there, try to, you know, make it a little bit livable for your brothers and sisters and mamas and grandmas and things. You still get your hustle on, but you know, don't do it right in front of the store where they got to get bread and milk. Let them go to school, let them live their lives. If bullets are flying into the windows of people when they're cooking oatmeal with their mamas in the kitchen, then things are going wrong. Scarface is a movie that is very influential in this community. It's supposed to be a lesson of what not to do. Everybody watches Scarface, they get excited, they go out there and try to be like Scarface. The guy ends up going down in the end. So you're laughing at me, but you know, I, that's a very influential movie in the lives of these people. So again, back it off a bit, homies out there. If you're getting your game on, you know, don't, you know, go back behind the building if you have to. That's all I'm asking. Try to do things just to make it a little less visible. All right, now, there's things like police and fixing the schools and mentoring and these types of things, and that's all, you know, going to take a very long time. What can we do immediately to stamp out the fire? Parents, take more control of your kids' lives. It ain't easy, and the bad parents make it tougher for the, you know, good parents. So try to do, and also a media campaign, billboard, TV, radio, do as much campaigning as Zuma Dog does to help bring back the community.
Thank you very much. That closes our comment. Any members wishing to be heard on this? Seeing none, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48, called special by Councilmember Han.
Okay, we do have one card on this. Ms. Han, we'll take the public hearing first. Mr. Dog, item 48, do you want to hear?
I'm talking to Herr Paul Wade Dogg.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I agree.
That closes the public comment. Ms. Han?
I agree. Colleagues, actually, this is about Harbor Gateway, and I think a lot of what Zuma Dog just said actually is what is before us today. Many of you now are very familiar with the Harbor Gateway area, but we're certainly all very, very sadly familiar with the tragic shooting of Cheryl Green a couple weeks before Christmas last year. And I've been working very hard for this neighborhood, which historically has been very underserved by the city of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, it's this small strip of land that connects downtown Los Angeles with the harbor, and it has been difficult to deliver their fair share of services over many, many years. I've been trying to focus on that recently, getting them upgrades in their streetlights, getting long-awaited street sweeping, having our street services continue to sweep the area for bulky items that have been dumped in alleys and on sidewalks. So I'm really trying to focus resources in this area. But one of the things we need to do is find a place for these kids after school. And Cheryl Green tragically was standing, you know, on a corner at 3 o'clock in the afternoon after school, and that's part of the reason why she is no longer with us today, because she was murdered standing on the street. I want to find a place for these kids to go after school to keep them out of harm's way, as well as really giving them something positive to do, to prevent them from being recruited by these very powerful gang members. So I want to build a community center. This is one of the areas in our city that does not have a community center, for a, a place for these kids to go and hang out after school. And I'm working on a lot of options to do that, but in the meantime, what's before us today is, I would like for you to support me as I transport about $75,000 from my real estate property fund, so that I can do a couple things for the already existing Harbor South Bay Boys and Girls Clubs. One is to allow them to have more programs in one of their satellite offices on Gardena Boulevard, which is a little bit closer to the Harbor Gateway. And the other thing this $75,000 will do, it'll actually, we're focusing on transporting those kids after school, because both of these areas are a little bit too far for these kids to walk. So this money will allow the Harbor City Boys and Girls Club to purchase a van, to actually come into this neighborhood after school, work with the parents on a safe location to pick these kids up, transport them to the Boys and Girls Club for the afternoon, and then bring them home. It's also going to provide vouchers. Some of these kids actually are old enough to want to take public transportation, so we're going to give them vouchers to ride public transportation to the Boys and Girls Club. But either way, I think this $75,000 will go right to the heart of solving this problem of keeping our kids out of gangs, but also keeping them safe, just out of harm's way, which is sad, this day and age, that we have to work on keeping our kids in a safe place after school and, and not really allow them to hang out on the corner. Someday, this community will be safe. Someday, that 204th Street gang will not be a threat to the good people who live in the Harbor Gateway area. So I hope you'll support me on this motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Anybody else wishing to be heard from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 50, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, item number 50, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 50 regards utilizing $15,000 in the pipeline franchise revenue portion of the Council District 13 Real Property Trust Fund. I refer back to a previous council meetings held in September of '06, October of '06, and again in October of '06, where the LADOT was awarding bids or presenting bids for pipeline franchise fees, and I'm wondering if these funds are actually coming from the LADOT, any, any portion of the LADOT. the L A DOT, any portion of the L A DOT, to be used for repairing Hollywood historic sites. Could that please be clarified by the City Council? And also regarding an article, again, along the same lines in yesterday's Daily Breeze, where it refers to the DOT oversees street issues in the city and is responsible for traffic signals, crosswalks, and dash buses. It doesn't mention anything about the DOT authorizing issuance of oil pipelines. And I'd like to know that when the motions are made, such as this one regarding the pipeline franchise fee, that the L A DOT, if it is truly involved in it, it be mentioned so that the public knows where the fund is coming from. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. That closes our public comment on fifty. Any members from the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-one, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, Mr. Dogg, item fifty-one.
All right, let's see, we got item fifty-one. I wanted to wait for fifty-eight, so I'll pass on this.
Okay, thank you. That closes our public comment. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council? Seeing none, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-five, call special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask that the, for community support in helping us solve a very serious crime that occurred on Thursday, February 22nd, 2007, at approximately 2:00 PM. A thirty-eight-year-old resident of the Eighth District, Arturo Ramirez, was fatally struck by unknown suspects near Vermont and 68th Street in South Los Angeles. Mr. Ramirez was with his girlfriend when this confrontation occurred by two suspects described only as male African-Americans. One of the suspects blocked the couple's path while the other struck Mr. Ramirez in the head with a club-like weapon. The suspects then took Mr. Ramirez's property and fled. Mr. Ramirez eventually succumbed to the injuries at the scene. This case is being handled by Seventy-seventh Detectives, Detective David Craig. The callback number is 213-485-4164, and we're moving forward on a $50,000 reward in hopes that we can get information that would help them solve the crime. So we're asking for public support and assistance in helping Seventy-seventh on this case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-eight, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, item fifty-eight, Mr. Dogg.
Oh, no. I just weighed my time for this. It already took place March 3rd. It's the Day of Prayer, and so I hope the event went well. And for next year's Day of Prayer, I hope things like we could pray that Jack Weiss is never City Attorney. I'd like to pray that we can fix the schools and reduce classroom size. And I'd like to pray that we can be able to pay teachers more, so we can attract teachers. I'd like to also pray that we can have more police officers that we can recruit. We've got a war in Iraq, we've got a high house of causing, and a lot of barriers of entry. We're not able to hire the police, so I'd like to pray that we can hire more police. And I'd like to pray that we stop approving too much high density, because we don't have the infrastructures, the pipes can't accommodate, we don't have police, we can't do the trash, the streets are too crowded. That's not going away, so I'd like to pray that you can stop approving high density.
Mr. Dogg, appreciate your prayers. This is about the Day of Prayer and the special event, if you could speak.
Yes, it's the Day of Prayer, and these are the things that I'd like to pray for.
Not about everybody's prayers, but just whether you could speak to the Day of Prayer as a special event, please.
It's, yeah, well, these are some of the things that I think need to be incorporated in the Day of Prayer. And so some of the other things, unless, yeah, I hope the Prop R's overturned, I hope we can pray that Prop R's overturned.
Sir, this is your second warning. You have to speak about the event. We appreciate what you say.
Well, those are a lot of things anyway, and so those are some good things to pray for. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The excuse is on the desk. Councilmember LeBonde requests to be excused, March 30th, for city business. A motion is required.
Right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused, April 17th, to leave at noon, March 30th, April 18th, to leave at 11:30, April 25th, to leave at 11:30. Those are all for city business, and a motion is required.
Okay, we'll move on that. Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, those excuses are granted as well.
Ms. Han requests to be excused Friday, April 13th, to, for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zion objects, but now he moves it, so with the, second for Mr. Parks, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Grohl requests to be excused, Tuesday, March 3rd, excuse me, March 20th, to leave at 11:15, for city business. That meets council policy.
Yeah, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused, Tuesday, April 3rd, to leave at 11:00, and Wednesday, April 18th, to leave at 11:15. Those meet council policy, and those are for city business.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Ruiz requests to be excused, March 23rd, to leave at noon, and Friday, May 11th, for city business. Those meet council policy.
Those excuses are granted.
And Councilmember Corn is requests to be excused, Friday, August 3rd, for personal business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, now it's time for announcements, colleagues. Any announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Just thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for the hard work over in the Capitol, Washington D.C. this past few days. For some of us, we had our committee meetings, 7:30 a.m. Eastern Time, which really meant about 4:30 our time.
3:30, let's say.
3:30, with that one hour, you're right. But the good news is that, it's actually yesterday, Congressmember Lucero by Allard got $20 million approved to the Congress Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for the Los Angeles River Projects. So a lot of kudos to the Congress member for the hard work. We still have to go through the full Congress and the Senate Committee, but put it this way, it's on track, it's moving forward, it's $20 million we didn't have, and it bodes well for our future in terms of dealing with our water issues, our natural habitats, and all of the great things that could happen when we create relief for this great city. Also, on a different lighter note, UCLA is stepping forward, next level of championship, March, it's March Madness, so we get tested with Indiana this weekend, and I understand the Trojans are playing tonight against Arkansas, so we wish them luck.
Thank you. It's very generous of you. And I want to thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your leadership as the Chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee of the National League of Cities, Mr. Zion on the National Board and chairing up the Immigration Task Force, Mr. Parks's work on the Fair Committee. I think we had a majority of the council that was in D.C., and very, very long hours, but productive ones. When you hear announcements like what Mr. Reyes was talking about, making sure that Los Angeles gets its fair share of dollars, being present and being there is so critically important. So I want to thank everybody who made the trip to D.C. on the red ayes, and then back here to Los Angeles. Mr. Zion.
Thank you. On the immigration reform, I just wanted to announce that that seems to be moving forward with the Democratic Congress, and I met with a number of representatives regarding that issue, and hopefully Democratic Congress, they believe that this will move in this particular session. They're very committed to it. I think immigration reform is long overdue, it'll benefit many people. Also, I met with Buck McKeon from the Great 12th District, Congressman Buck McKeon, who also has great interest in having something done to address the issue of immigration. So the Democratic Congress said, "We want to get something done." I'm the bipartisan guy, so that's how it works. Anyway, I also want to announce that tomorrow, St. Patrick's Day Community March in celebration, come on out and join the folks in Canoga Park, All-American City, 1:00 at the Madrid Theater, Sherman Way in Owensmouth. That's where it begins, you go down Sherman Way. So we do have our annual St. Patrick's Day on St. Patrick's Day in the San Fernando Valley. All-American City, Canoga Park, you're all invited to attend. Come out and see the great people in Canoga Park, San Fernando Valley. You too, Ms. Han, come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. Ms. Han?
To wish a happy birthday to my grandson, Josiah, who turns one today. Happy birthday, Josiah.
Happy birthday.
He's sleeping through the night.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to announce that we have a community meeting regarding the Lemur Park Vision, several presentations from community groups, it's gonna be held at Autobahn, Middle School Auditorium, Saturday, March 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? No, do we adjourn any motions? We do. If I could please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourned motions.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of former El Segundo Councilman, John Gaines, who passed away Tuesday after a, just a year-long battle with cancer. He was only 56. He was born in Ohio, and he graduated from Loyola Marymount University after a brief stint in the U.S. Naval Academy. He was a reluctant politician, opting for public service only after his oldest son challenged him to do something instead of just complaining about what was wrong with El Segundo. He was a council member from 1998 to 2006, and he was very passionate about the impact that our airport had on El Segundo, and he was one of those who really was one of the loudest, most committed voices to protecting El Segundo from the negative impacts of our LAX. And I got to know him very well during that time, but he always, he has a good heart, and he always really cared about protecting the neighborhoods in El Segundo. He was apparently a very affectionate, hands-on father who acted in his children's school play, "His Daughter Becky" said, and he coached his sons in T-ball and Little League. He loved music and motorcycles. This is something I didn't know, he went so far as to tattoo "Ride" on his upper right arm. And he survived by his wife of 34 years, Susan, three children, Becky, Bobby, and Ben, a son-in-law, Dean, a daughter-in-law, Grazzi, and grandson, Colin. Services will be noon, March 24th, at St. Anthony's Catholic Church in El Segundo. John really was the epitome of public service. I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Nate Chappelle. Some of you might have some other things to say about him, but certainly he was a home builder, best known for developing Porter Ranch, and he just passed away at the age of 85. He died in his sleep Sunday while returning to San Pedro on a cruise, so that's a great way to go. He built more than 65,000 homes from San Diego to San Francisco. He was a Holocaust survivor, and he felt such a responsibility and was so impacted by that experience that he dedicated his whole life to helping others, and he became a leading philanthropist in Israel and the United States. For 30 years, he served on the Little Hoover Commission, and under his leadership, the panel saved taxpayers billions of dollars. Among other achievements, the panel instituted Medi-Cal reforms, raised nursing home standards, and reformed education spending. He was born in Poland, and he was a teenager when the Nazis invaded and his mother was deported to the Targawa Ghetto. He helped some ghetto prisoners escape, according to the obituary, including sneaking out children in oversized soup kettles. He was deported later to Auschwitz concentration camp, and he survived two forced marches to subsequent concentration camps, and he was 23 when the war ended and they were liberated. He spent the rest of the 1940s helping to build housing for homeless Jews. He survived by his brother David, his brother-in-law Max, as well as his daughter Vera, three grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. His wife Lily passed on in 1994. I know Nate was a friend of many of us, and I know he certainly was a friend of my family for a very, very long time. I also have.
Just while we're on that one, see if others would like to say something about Nate Chappelle. Ms. Perry?
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe everyone could sign on that. He was a giant in terms of making us remember our history. I would also like to adjourn in memory.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, Ms. Chappelle, because I know there's another one there. Did you want anybody else? I want to say a couple words as well on Nate's granddaughter was one of my closest friends, or is one of my closest friends, and growing up, spent a lot of time with the family, and was in touch with her when I heard the tragic news. She said that he died with a smile on his face, somebody who sometimes a smile was elusive, given the many trials and tribulations of his life and the work that he did here locally, whether it was the Holocaust Museum, building much of the land and the infrastructure of Southern California, and the legacy that he's left behind is something felt very deeply in the Jewish community, very deeply in the Southern California community, and certainly most by his family. That granddaughter, Lisa, my thoughts are with her, the entire family, Vera and Paul, his son-in-law, and he was a giant in our time, one of a generation who increasingly is passing from us, but Holocaust survivors who have made their impact here and who built a new life and a new culture here in Los Angeles. Mr. Smith?
Very fortunate to have Mr. Chappelle partner in my district in many ways. First of all, building 6,000 housing units in my district, some still in construction in Porter Ranch. But more importantly, the things that he did that most people don't even know, he had a huge heart, having come from extreme poverty of the Polish ghetto, surviving Auschwitz, as Ms. Han said, the trials and tribulations he went through. And I've read his book, if you've never read his book, it's an extraordinary book about the life and times of people that went through the Holocaust and those that did survive, the very few. Nathan got out, having lost, I think, some 21 or 22 members of his family in that horrible program. But what really was significant about him is as he came back and he came to America and made such great success himself, he gave back so much that so few people even know about. When we wanted to build a YMCA in my community, the North Valley YMCA, he gave us the land, and then gave us a half a million dollars on top of that, and he said, "Don't put my name on it anywhere." I know he has given, over the course of years, multi-millions of dollars to Senior Sinai Hospital, said, "Do not put my name on it." He did that throughout the Jewish community, where he saved a number of Jewish community centers about five years ago, when the county Jewish community was going to close them. He saved four of them from closure by writing a check to keep them open, and he just said, "Don't put my name on it." He had a huge heart, and he was a very fine man. I enjoyed my lunches with him. We would get together every few months and talk, and the stories the man would tell, I just sat there and I shut up and listened. Just extraordinary human being and a true loss to this community, and we're all very sorry to see him go.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I also have Anita Valdez, who passed away in San Pedro at the age of 83. She was active in the community, serving as a member of the VFW post 2967 Auxiliary in Wilmington, as well as the Senior Citizens Sunshine Club in Wilmington. Anita is survived by two sons, Adolf and Victor, two daughters, Irene and Christine, eight grandchildren, and 14 great-grandchildren. Our community will really miss Anita. And one more, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of L A P D Officer John Costo, who passed away March 4th at the age of 64, doing what he loved, which was running. And he was a resident of San Pedro, and he spent his entire career at the Harbor Division, serving many years as our court liaison. He was extremely popular and well-loved officer, particularly among those officers and staff at Harbor Division. He was a veteran of 35 years, and he was planning to retire in May. John had an energy that was rivaled by none. His motto was, "There's so much to do in life, I will sleep when I die." He loved to spend time with his grandchildren, taking them to the park, walking for ice cream, and spending time with them in their garden. He survived by his best friend, his wife, Sylvia, his son, John Junior, his daughter, Lisa, and three grandchildren, as well as numerous other friends, family, and his brothers and sisters of the L A P D. May he sleep well now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I asked if we adjourn in memory of Beverly Gottlieb. She was born in Massachusetts, January 1914. She's a woman of many talents, but where she basically shined in this area is when she took up a great deal of support for veterans in the community. She relocated in the city of L.A. in 2001 and continued those activities of raising money specifically for veterans. She passed away on March 4th, and funeral services were held on March 8th. She survived by her daughter Maggie and five grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to just make a reference Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to just make a reference to Mr. Chappelle, that he was a giant among many men of that generation who were self-made men, who fought horrible odds, the atrocities of the Holocaust, and were self-made and built not just an empire, but gave back and determined the destiny of our city in many ways by taking it in a direction by the strength of their own charisma, their own substance, and their own desire to give back what had been taken from them at such a young age. And that's why this is such a horrible loss and that's why we should spend time with people who are older and take the lessons that they give us. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Reverend Kensho Furuya, who was a lovely person. Reverend Furuya was a sensei, as many called him, attended the University of Southern California and Harvard University and earned degrees in Asian Studies. In nineteen sixty-nine, he went to the Aikido World Headquarters in Tokyo to study the ancient Japanese art of Aikido under the late Kisho Maru Uishiba Doshu. In nineteen seventy-four, he returned home to open his own dojo so that the residents of Little Tokyo could practice the art that he dedicated his life to mastering. Reverend was an important part of the community and played a vital role in maintaining the identity of Little Tokyo, and for that and everything else that he brought to the community, he will be dearly missed. So please join us in paying tribute to the life and legacy of a great sensei. Services will be held Saturday, March seventeenth, at Zen Shushi Temple, seven-thirty p.m. And then my second adjourned motion, and I believe Mr. Reyes would like to sign on to this, is in memory of Magdalena Tejada Chavez. She was the loving mother of Maria Elena Salcedo and Jose Luis Perez and the grandmother of Martha Salcedo, who's a friend to many of us. Her life was centered on caring for her children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, friends and neighbors. She was a very humble person who spent many years working in the garment industry, and in her spare time, she loved to attend Sunday Mass and travel. She was grateful for every day that she received and leaves behind a legacy of love, as well as an appreciation for life and faith.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Did I have a second or? Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Zion.
I have three. Mr. President, Nancy Lugo passed away February twenty-seventh, longtime resident of Canoga Park, passed away at the age of forty-six. Nancy Lugo devoted part of her life to assisting her husband Rudy after being diagnosed with cancer. Nancy was loathed very much by her family, friends, and especially the students from Canoga Park High School, where she helped her husband with fundraising events to benefit the Canoga Park High School football team that he coached. Nancy will be greatly missed by all of her family and friends and folks at Canoga Park High School. Survived by her loving husband, a daughter Melissa, son Christopher, sister Jody, and niece Nicole. Nancy Lugo, may she rest in peace. March fourth, George W. Charbonneau passed away, a longtime resident of Reseda, passed away at the age of eighty. Worked for Rockwell as an instrument technician for thirty-four years. He died peacefully. He will be greatly missed by his family and friends, survived by his wife Beatrice, daughter and son-in-law Diane and Jim Graver, and grandchildren Christopher and Katie Graver. And finally, Irene Schneider passed away March eighth, longtime resident of Canoga Park, passed away at the age of seventy-nine. Born in New York, New York, I'm sorry, born in Brooklyn, New York, nineteen twenty-seven, graduated from high school, enrolled at the Fashion Institute of Design in New York, which later became a bookkeeper. Devoted part of her life to assisting different community organizations like the YMCA, Red Hat Society, and so for Sunday's Children, an organization dedicated to providing arts and craft for cancer victims, loved by both family and friends who viewed her as a memorable character. As Janet Doll, a longtime friend, stated, Irene was a shining light of a human being, a warm kind of loving gem of woman. She is a major loss, her death is a major loss to our community. In addition to her community involvement, worked as an executive secretary and bookkeeper in her daughter-in-law's company, H.B. Distributor Division, ITN, Inc. in Northridge. She will be greatly loved. She's greatly loved and will be missed by all who knew her, survived by Pam, Steven, Shannon, and Bonnie, her children. Irene Schneider, may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We will next meet Tuesday, the twentieth of March, and until then, we are adjourned. Have a great weekend. Thank you.